Good evening. It's on about 7:00 PM Tuesday evening. This is a regular session of Athens City Council. The mayor is absent this evening, so President of Council Chris Nicely will be acting mayor, and in her stead I will be President Pro Tem of Council, though I will retain the ability to vote on ordinances. The first thing to do is establish a quorum, and I believe everybody is finally here. And so next is the disposition of minutes, regular session of council held January 3rd, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Some may.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor of disposing of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Communications, any communications from members of council, from their constituents or others? Member Swain.
I have had several emails and texts asking me to extend thanks to the appropriate individual or individuals, and that individual would be with us today, and that would be Mr. Andy Stone. This is in regards to a request that I made of the city from constituents to put up reflectors on the telephone poles that sit this far from East State Street between Morris Avenue and Madison. And they're up, they're decorative, and it makes it a lot safer driving down that street. From the time the request was made to the time they went up was less than seven days. So on behalf of people from the Fourth Ward who contacted me, Mr. Stone, thank you for getting that done. It's a much safer environment right now.
Thank you, Member Swain. I deserve no credit other than placing the work order into the work order system, so all credit belongs to Chuck Nungester and the street crew for that work.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other communications? Member McCary.
Thank you. I have received a couple of emails and some verbal complaints or concerns from citizens with hopes that the city might do more to promote diversity and inclusion in Uptown's Athens businesses, particularly with regard to LGBT inclusion. And I imagine we may hear more of those specifics from complainants, but I receive those complaints in both my Athens City Council capacity and LGBT Center Director at Ohio University, so I feel like I'm positioned well to hear a lot of those complaints.
Thank you. Any others? Members? Oh, yes. Member Solby.
I'm still way down here.
I didn't see your hand. And there's a reason why I wear glasses.
Just real quick, I got a few complaints about vehicles parked in places they shouldn't be on the west side. Apparently, there was a junked car that's been sitting there for quite some time, and I've followed up, and there is some work being done to tow that vehicle away. But I also want to remind everybody out there that we had a bit of a hiatus for that 24-hour rule, and this is particularly, I think, important for those on the west side. Remember, you do have to move your car now, and don't forget, you can get a 72-hour annual pass, or permit, I should say. So that's just a little reminder to everybody, and things are going to be different in January.
Thank you. Anyone else? Other elected officials? Law Director?
No.
Auditor?
No.
Madam Mayor?
No report, but just greetings from Mayor Patterson. He's in Washington at the National Day of Racial Healing and also at the National League of Cities REAAL training. So he'll be back. He'll tell us all about it, I'm sure. Sounds like it's been a good meeting.
Let's see. I guess we're now at step six, ordinances for a second reading, and if I understand correctly, both of these ordinances need to be suspended. And I will turn it over to Member Crowell.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Reisner. I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 0123.
Second.
Thank you, Member Grace. As Member Reisner commented on, this ordinance and the next ordinance are prior-year bills, and we'd like to get these approved tonight so that these can be paid. I'll go ahead and read Section 1 of this ordinance. The 2022 Appropriation Ordinance 15522 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $143,846.70 to the Street Rehabilitation Fund, and this is for the Stimson Avenue State Infrastructure Bank loan payment. The other appropriation in this ordinance is for $550,000 to the Medical Insurance Fund, and this is to cover 2022 medical costs. Thank you, President Pro Tem Reisner.
Okay, so we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Rules have been suspended. Member Crowell?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve 0123.
Second.
For the previously stated reasons. Thank you.
All those in favor of adopting 0123, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. It's passed. Ordinance 02-23, an ordinance authorizing the payment of prior-year expenses and declaring an emergency introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, Member Reisner. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 0223.
Second.
Thank you, Member Grace. The reasons being, these are the prior-year expenses, and we'd like to get them cleared up now.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. It's passed. The rules are suspended.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve 0223.
Second.
For the previous reasons discussed.
Very well. Any discussion? Okay, well, all those in favor of adopting 02-23, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. It's passed. Ordinances for first reading, 03-23, an ordinance authorizing unneeded or obsolete municipal personal property to be sold by internet auction, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, Member Reisner. I've got locked out here. One moment. Thank you. 0323, as discussed at committee, this authorizes the city to sell unneeded or obsolete property by internet auction. As discussed with Service Safety Director Stone, this is specifically authorizing the internet auction piece, not the individual property that may come before council later in the year, but this authorizes the internet auction. Thank you, President Pro Tem Reisner.
Discussion? Very well. 04-23, an ordinance amending ordinance 156-22, reallocating revenues from the city income tax and declaring an emergency introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you. We discussed the reallocation of the city income tax mix, about what percentage goes to the general fund, to the street fund, recreation fund, capital improvements fund, and the transportation assistance fund. We, as a council, discussed changing this mix to put another half percentage in the recreation fund and then adjusting the other funds in order to make up that movement. And through the auditor's close examination of the ordinance, we discovered that in the paragraph above those direct changes to the income tax mix, there were percentages that, percentages for those individual funds, and those percentages had to be adjusted. So originally, we had seen 5.41% deducted for the Street Rehabilitation Fund. That actually should be now 5.13%. Same for the Arts, Parks, and Recreation Debt Fund, 5.41%, changed to 5.13%. And instead of 2.7% for the Recreation Community Facility Fund, 271, it should be 2.56%. And then also the 5.13% for the Fire Station Debt Fund. I'm happy to invite the auditor to the podium if she'd like to talk about this more.
I guess I would just point out that those percentages that Member Crowell is talking about are the levies that we pass, and that tax money is earmarked for things as a new fire station, for recreation, for street repair. So those percentages come off the top of the total revenue that we get. The remaining amount of total revenue, which is around 85%, is what council has control over. It's considered general obligation tax dollars and can be spent really however we want, although we're not supposed to subsidize proprietary funds. But so that's the mix that mostly gets changed as needed by city council. So these percentages, we had forgotten to add on the new one that just started, and so it changes the percentages for all the other ones at the top of Section 1.
So these are effective January 1st, 2023. Are there any questions for the auditor or for me? Yes, Member Swain?
What does the Transportation Assistance Fund fund?
Well, over the years, it's funded a lot of things. We used to buy our own buses. We have a bus garage. Right now, it's mostly for the fare box. We sell tickets for transportation at the community center. It's not for our streets and things like that. It's for actual transportation, which for us mainly has to do with the buses.
Okay. Director Stone?
To further clarify what Heger Heck mentioned, so for the rural transit that we operate here in the city, and ultimately, we operate through a contract with Hocking Athens Perry Community Action, HAPCAP, who operates Athens Holy Transit, there's a local match, and the local match comes from this particular percentage of the income tax. It goes to the vast majority of the funds that operate that system, other than the fares that the system collects, come from the federal government. But that federal government requires a local match, and the local match ultimately is paid for by City of Athens tax dollars. And so that 214 fund is the local match to fund Athens Holy Transit, and I've got way more information than you'd ever be interested in related to how that's all split up, and if you'd be interested in talking about it, I can share it with you.
Okay. Next is 05-23, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to close streets in the Uptown area for special events during the 2023 calendar year and to change request dates or cancel events as necessary, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Absolutely mean. This ordinance is rather long because there are several events listed here. I shall read the pertinent areas. Close designated streets to vehicular traffic in the city of Athens no earlier than 6:00 AM and no later than midnight, and maintain cross-traffic wherever practicable for the following events. Those events are the Ohio University International Street Festival, Athens Film Festival Court Street Screening, Dora Days in coordination with the Anti-Racism Book Club and Ohio Brew Week, Boogie on the Bricks, the Plains Lion Club Cruise Ends, that's plural, there's one, two, three of them, Ohio Brew Week Last Call, Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau, Athena Ride for Women, Ohio Health Bounty on the Bricks, Athens Art and Music Festival, Ohio University Welcome Weekend Student Fair, City of Athens Halloween Aruba Trick or Treat, Annual Holiday Tree Lighting, Passion Works New Year's Eve Party. Section B, ban parking on designated streets beginning no earlier than 3:00 AM and no later than 1:00 AM the following day to accommodate said events. Any comments, discussion? Okay. Let's go into the next one here. 06-23, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Title 13, General Offenses, Chapter 13.04, offenses against public peace, Sections 13.04.10, unnecessary noise in designated event areas, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. And Section 1 reads, "The enforcement of Athens City Code Title 13, General Offenses, Chapter 13.04, offenses against public peace, Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise is hereby suspended until midnight for the following events authorized by Ordinance 05-23: Boogie on the Bricks, Ohio Brew Week Last Call, Athens Arts and Music Festival, City of Athens Halloween, Passion Works New Year's Eve Party." Any discussion from administration or anything? Okay. And now we'll go to 07. 07-23, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in the designated event areas introduced by Councilmember Reisner. And Section 1 states, "The enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting is hereby suspended from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM to allow vending in the designated street closure areas authorized by Ordinance 05-23. At such times and areas determined appropriate by the administration for the following events: Ohio University International Street Festival, Athens Film Festival Court Street Screening, Boogie on the Bricks, Ohio Brew Week Last Call, Athens Arts and Music Festival, City of Athens Halloween, Passion Works New Year's Eve Party." Section 2, prospective vendors shall register their names, addresses, and items to be vended with the Code Enforcement Office by 2:00 PM on or before two business days prior to the listed event. Vendors shall be entitled to vending spots on a first-come basis as determined by the Code Enforcement Office. Vendors must comply with all rules and regulations established by the Office of Code Enforcement. Section 3, vendors shall be subject to the following. Those vendors currently holding a license to vend on East Union Street shall be allowed to continue to operate at a time and location determined by the Service Safety Director and the event organizer. For all other vendors, per trailer, a fee of $25 paid to the City of Athens Code Office and a food license permit from the Athens City County Health Department shall be required, and any such additional administrative rules and regulations as may be established by the Service Safety Director. Any comments on that? Rather long ordinance? Administration, anything? All right. 08-23, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to suspend temporarily the fee for parking at metered spaces in the municipal parking garage introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Section 1, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to suspend the fee for parking in the municipal parking garage excluding two-hour meter spaces on one upper as follows: Friday, December 8th after 5:00 PM; Saturday, December 9th, all day; Thursday, December 14th after 5:00 PM; Saturday, December 16th, all day; Thursday, December 21st after 5:00 PM; Saturday, December 23rd, all day. Discussions? Administration? Finally, for me, anyway. 09-23, an ordinance suspending Athens City Code Section 7.05.03, continuous parking in the same location from Monday, December 17th, 2023 through midnight on Saturday, January 13th, 2024, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. And Section 1 states, "Athens City Code Section 7.05.03, continuous parking in the same location is hereby suspended from Saturday, December 17th, 2023 through midnight on Saturday, January 13th, 2024." Anything?
I'll just...
Member Carey?
Thank you. I will clarify that the written text is correct. It was just misread that it is from Sunday, December 17th, not Monday, December 17th.
Did I say that?
Yes, but the written word is fine.
Sorry. I apologize.
No problem.
I can read it again if you'd like.
I liked it.
Sunday, December 17th, 2023. So there.
You got it.
Okay. Let's go on to 1023. An ordinance authorizing the annual purchase of water softening salt for the water treatment plant. Councilmember McCary?
Thank you. This was brought up in committee very recently, so we understand that this is a regular maintenance need that the city has. Section 1 reads, "The Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into contract with the lowest and best bidder for the purchase of the city's annual water softening salt for the water treatment plant." Section 2, "The Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to $168,000 from Water Fund Plant 740.637 for said purchase," and I will add that that was discussed as being an understandable and not too unexpected increase in cost from last year. This fluctuates its understanding, and it's actually down from what it used to be. I don't know if the City and Safety Services Director has anything to add?
Nothing further beyond what you mentioned, Member McCary.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Okay. And last but not least, 11-23, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into contract for construction of the new fire headquarters, project number 346, and declaring an emergency introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and begin by just giving the highlights, and then also recall that this was an agenda item at our last City and Safety Services meeting. Section 1 reads, "The Athens City Council hereby authorizes the Service Safety Director to enter into contract with the lowest and best bidder for the construction of the new fire headquarters, project 346, on property to be acquired pursuant to the purchase agreement authorized by Ordinance 121-22, adopted October 3rd, 2022. A copy of the fully executed purchase agreement shall be attached and incorporated herein reference prior to the third reading." That is the main thing that we wanted to clarify following last committee meetings discussion about clarifying the fact that we do not have the purchase finalized with all the folks who have to sign into agreement. So this is clarifying that by the third reading, we will have a fully executed purchase agreement in place. Section 2, the 2023 Appropriation Ordinance 155-22 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $8,400,000 to Safety Services Fund Fire 206.208, transaction class 500 for construction, and $600,000 to Capital Improvement Fund Fire 580.208, transaction class 500 for construction, and increasing the total appropriations by said amounts. Finally, Section, I think I'm going to just do Section 3.
Go for it.
The Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to $10,270,000 as follows: $670,000 from General Fund Fire 101.208, transaction class 500, authorized by Ordinance 18-22 for planning and preliminary engineering, and then $600,000 authorized by Ordinance 84-22 for design and construction management services; $9 million from Safety Services Fund Fire 206.208, that includes $8,400,000 as well as $600,000 for land purchase and site preparation authorized by Ordinance 121-22; and $600,000 from Capital Improvement Funds Fire 580.208, transaction class 500. Said project, I think there's maybe a word missing for said project 346? Is that possible typographic thing? Okay. Other than that, those are the primary details, and I'll ask our City Safety Services Director if he has anything to add, or if our Law Director might as well.
Thank you very much, Member McCary. I appreciate you going through in detail all the various aspects of how we're going to fund this project. You know, as a reminder, this is something that, you know, we do every once every 50 or 60 years. I build a new fire station headquarters, and so we want to ensure that we do it right. Of note, in Section 1, it discussed the copy of the fully executed purchase agreement will be attached and incorporated in the third reading. You already have approved that purchase agreement. However, upon extremely detailed review, we identified that in Section 13G, there were two errors. One error noted that the width of the easement that Ohio University retained on the northwest side of the property wasn't noted. It just said 80 feet. It didn't say 80 feet wide or 80 feet long, and so we've asked on that document that you approved that it be modified and actually say 80 feet wide, because that's what the intent was. Additionally, it made reference, if you remember, you know, way back now, we had discussed simultaneous leases, and that particular section 13G referred to the leased land. Well, there's no longer any leased land because it's actually purchased property, and so it will change from leased land to the property that the city is purchasing. So those two changes are being made to the document compared to what you approved earlier, and that's why it's going to get changed and attached and incorporated here on the third reading. Another note that I want to bring up is the Department of Administrative Services, acting on behalf of the state of Ohio, is the ultimate signatory when it comes to executing this agreement. And while Ohio University and myself, Ohio University's interim Vice President for Finance and Administration has signed it, and I have signed it, it still has not been signed by the Director of Administrative Services, because ultimately, the state of Ohio is selling this property to the city of Athens and not Ohio University, even though Ohio University Board of Trustees, you know, authorized its sale. That purchase contract can only be agreed to That purchase contract can only be agreed to by the Director of the Department of Administrative Services after the State Controlling Board meets. And I've been in discussion with the real estate specialist at the Department of Administrative Services after your inquiries last week regarding the timeline and how all this can happen. He does not believe that the Controlling Board will be able to meet and approve the purchase contract in its current form in time to meet third reading, per our schedule. And so what I'm going to ask you to do is add, as noted in Section 4, the emergency clause that's in here, so that, you know, that 30-day window after the ordinance is passed is no longer necessary. And then prior to third reading, I will ask you to table this ordinance. In order to allow the State Controlling Board to meet on the 27th of February, they will meet, they will approve it, you know, assuming everything goes correctly, after which the Director of Administrative Services can sign it, and then we will come back and ask you to pass it in the third reading with a fully executed purchase agreement attached to the ordinance. But then it's within the 30-day period from when we want to be able to award a bid, which is 20 March. You know, we're going to open bids in accordance with our timeline on 15 March, and then award a bid on 20 March. And I want to be able to do that under the full authority granted by the council, and if the Controlling Board doesn't meet until 27 February, then it won't be within 30 days for me to be able to award. So that's how we're going to proceed and juggle all the bureaucratic process, so that both the Department of Administrative Services has agreed to the purchase contract, as well as this body has agreed to the purchase contract. And so I think that hopefully that meets your intent in accordance with the questions asked last week about whether or not we actually own the property that we're appropriating and authorizing money to build a $10 million or $9 million fire station on. So sorry for a long-winded explanation, but I wanted to get out in front of that. So, you know, a couple of weeks from now, when I ask you to table it, you understand why.
Thank you. And I know you've been in consultation with our law director, but do you have anything you'd like to add?
No.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments, further discussion on time or process before I raise a question about costs? Timing or process? Okay. I just wanted to, for the sake... Yep. Comment, question?
No, I said we could ask Director Stone to repeat what he just said.
Oh, my God. Yes, yes, in summary form, please. No. I do think that, just for the benefit of the public and the fact that this project has been in development for some time, folks listening in may be hearing a larger sum for this project than initially anticipated. And I was just wondering if you might be able to comment on what's increased over the more than a year that we've been discussing of this.
Right. Thank you, Member McCary. I did have a meeting, the Fire Chief and I had a meeting with the architect a couple of weeks ago, and when we first went into this project, we were hoping that we could get close to the similar cost that New Philadelphia had experienced with the construction of their new station, and that what we've designed is very similar to what New Philadelphia designed and built several years ago. And that was sitting at about 300, I'm sorry, $280 a square foot on construction cost. Well, right now, based on the estimates that our architect has pulled together, and those estimates are from, you know, detailed review of other bids, as well as having a contractor take a look at the project and give an estimated cost, he's sitting it right around $383 per square foot, which is significantly more than what we were hoping to be able to build this for when we went into the project. That said, we think that the construction market is cooling off a little bit. We are going to take every effort that we can to build up interest in this project so that we have competitive bidders for it, and I am hopeful that we can deliver this project and get bids well under that $9 million that we're requesting. But what I don't want to do, simply because of timing and missing construction session, would be to request a lesser amount, have a greater amount in the bid, and then subsequently have to come back and lose several months. And so that's why we're asking for what we're asking for. If I don't have to spend it, I fully intend not to spend it, because I have other things to spend that money on.
Absolutely. Other questions or comments, discussion on this item? I do know that one of the primary citizen concerns and questions I've received has been about the environmental impact, which has been addressed in past, I think we call them open houses, or opportunities for community input. I am wondering if there's a significant portion of this increased cost that's attributed to the need to raise the ground for, I guess, proximity to the river?
Thank you, Member McCary. No, that's not really what's driving this project cost, really. It's a function of cost of building materials and, you know, production of those building materials to have them shipped, HVAC components, all the various components and the thing, supply chain costs of just both in demand and labor costs associated with those have significantly increased in recent years and months. And really, that's what we believe is driving the cost. We're actually getting a pretty good price on costs associated with raising the elevation of the site.
Very informative. Any final questions from council members? Administration? Audience? No more discussion?
Are you done?
Yes, done. No more discussion.
Thank you, Director Stone. That was very informative. And could I have a written transcript of that, by the way? Okay, let's get on with it. Announcements and other business. We have confirmed the mayor's appointments to the Recreation Advisory Board, and I'll pass it over to Members Swank.
Well, we have good news and we have... So good news. For the first time in, oh, gosh, since last June, as of today, assuming this council votes in favor of it, we will have seven members on our advisory board. Unfortunately, that's only the last three days because we've had a resignation in the last 48 hours, plus an expired term. But the real good news is we have two, what I consider very, very high-quality candidates. The first is Megan Russell. You all have her resume on your drive. Megan is a tenure resident of the West Side, and one of her strongest things she brings to this committee will be her extensive experience in the accessibility arena, and you can see that in her resume. Do we do these one at a time, or do we do them together? We do them together? The second one is Anne LaRue. Anne is a lifetime resident of Athens. Her resume in terms of arts, parks, and recreation stretches from here to Palmeroy. She is currently the one of two middle school phys ed teachers right up the, where am I here? Yeah, right up the hill here. Started the archery program in the Athens City Schools, does horses, has two daughters who played collegiate athletics, and she's a volleyball official at the highest level in the state of Ohio, actually has officiated the state women's high school finals at Wright State University. So I would like to move that we ratify the mayor's appointments of Megan Russell and Anne LaRue to the Arts, Parks, and Recreation Advisory Board.
Seconded.
We've had a motion and a second to appoint the mayor's choices for the Recreation Advisory Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. They're appointed. There's a couple of other things we have to do here that's not on the agenda. I need a motion to reappoint Carolyn Lewis and David McNeely to the Commission on Disabilities.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
I will say that as our liaison to our Commission on Disabilities, Dr. Carolyn Lewis and David McNeely have been invaluable leaders to the efforts of the entire commission and its committees, so I would highly encourage us to endorse these reappointments.
Well spoken. Any other discussion? We've had a motion and a second. We'll have a vote. All those in favor of Carolyn Lewis and David McNeely to the Commission on Disabilities, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Eyes have it. Reappointment is completed. And one last item, a motion to accept December 2022... What?
I wanted to bring up something before the meeting is over briefly. So...
Okay. Well, the meeting's not over yet.
I know.
So what do you want to do? I mean, you got the floor. Do something with it.
Okay. All right. So I just wanted to let everybody know that we are going, the ad hoc Pedestrian Accessibility Committee is going to be presenting next Monday, on the 23rd, to talk about the report and plan that the committee has worked very hard on, and all council members received a copy of that. So we look forward to learning more about that next week, and there's a lot of work put into this, so I'm very excited. There's some wonderful ideas there that I think will make a real big difference in the community. That's it.
Thank you. Moving right along, a motion to accept December 2022's financial reports.
So moved. Seconded.
Would the auditor care to speak on this burning issue? No? Good. Okay. And we have a motion, a second. All those in favor of accepting the reports signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. It's done. Opportunities for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the Crickets out there. Okay. All right. In that case, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
We've had a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it.